Authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in a closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, reassess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30, and I am calling this meeting to order. We are very privileged tonight to have two, and they used to be this big, and now, thank goodness, I had on heels tonight because they're both would make, they'd be taller than me if I wasn't wearing heels. If I could have Connor Dillon come forward. Connor is in eighth grade. He attends Bastrop Middle School. He is on the Student Council. I know he plays football, and he says he likes math, but turn around, they want to see you. He emphasized that it was algebra, not just random math. It is algebra as an eighth grader. And if I could have Maggie Carroll come forward. Maggie Carroll is in seventh grade, and she also attends Bastrop Middle School. She's on the Student Council. Maggie is a basketball player. And when your grandpa is Joe Beal, you also like math. So both of these, both of these kids do great in math. So smile for your parents, let them take a picture. And then they, if everyone will please rise, these two young people are going to lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one rule, liberty, and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the honor of Texas pride. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and one.
If you will remain standing, Police Chaplain Linda Sparks will be leading us on our invocation tonight.
If you bow your heads, please. Lord, I just thank you for the opportunity that you've given to us to live in Bastrop, Texas. Lord, I just ask you to be present over this meeting, be present in the lives of everybody represented here. Lord, the long hours that the city workers put in and the council members put in. Lord, I just ask you to reestablish relationships with families who feel like that they don't get enough time or something. And I just thank you for this beautiful city, for this beautiful state, and God bless the United States of America.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Sparks. The chaplains perform such a wonderful service, and we appreciate all of their hard work and effort. And these kids are on Student Council and make good grades because they do their homework. So I promised them it was fine for them to go home and take care of their schoolwork. So we, our next item on the agenda will be the mayor's report. I have a couple of quick things before we get started. One, I want to make sure everyone realizes that we have two seats that are up for reelection. There's going to be election items on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure that the public knew that packets are available to be picked up here at City Hall if anyone is interested in running for office. Those packets are available. And I was also going to, I had to mention, we had, everybody on the dais was a part of the walk, and Councilmember Jones as well. The MLK Walk and the event at the Convention Center yesterday was just outstanding. At a time when our country is very divided, and sometimes, I know I'm getting old because I think we're all going to you-know-where in a basket, and I can't believe who's going to take care of us in the future. The six speakers that we heard at the event yesterday restored my hope that we're going to be just fine when I'm unable to defend myself. I think they're going to take care of this country just fine. I really appreciate council participating in the walk and the great event that we had. Learned a lot of things, really enjoyed Charles Washington telling us quite a few things about Emile School. And there was a discussion about saving some of that history and making sure that we don't lose that. So just really enjoyed Mr. Washington, Ms. Clemmons, and all of our stops. We were at the AME Church, at the Kerr Community Center, Mount Rose, Emile School, and Macedonia Baptist is where we did the walk, and then we went over to the Convention Center. It was just an outstanding, just really an outstanding event. So with that, Colin, we can go to the first page. These are the things that I did between December 28th and January 9th, which was not a whole lot, but we, several of us attended the January Chamber Luncheon, and both Trey and Chief Altgeld were recognized for the work that they did to get the plane repainted out by the arena. And there was, you could see the city manager and Matt Jones and staff, and that was the Chamber Luncheon in January. And then in, in that timeframe, we also celebrated the retirement of both Mickey Duval and Cookie Atkins in the bottom left-hand corner, Colin. And we had a great retirement party for them at the library. The first Thursday of January was the First Farm Street Opry, and we were very blessed to have Dallas Wayne. He's just, he's a local gem and a fantastic artist, and it was, it was a lot of fun to hear him sing. I went to, I was actually at the Capitol on the first day of session and got to meet with the Governor's Policy Office with a room full of mayors, and let's just say, we're not all on the same page yet, but we're going to get there. In the bottom right-hand corner, I attended the Anytime Fitness Grand Opening. And on the right-hand side, you will see, that's my wonderful grandson, who was the first junior ambassador. He got, he made it to another ribbon cutting. And yes, that is Sam here. That is our EDC Board Member who is dressed up as Captain Fitness. And I knew no one would believe me, so I wanted to get that in a, in a picture. He's there with Todd, and the Anytime Fitness, that building is a very, very nice building and really helping the community. We've got a lot of options for working out, and it was fun to be a part of that. Speaking of working out, if you go to the next page, I've mentioned that we're participating in the It's Time Texas Challenge. When I turned in my mayor's report, it was due on January 10th, and as of January 10th, we had 153 registered users. As of today, we had 248 registered users. So really encouraged by everybody participating. Last Saturday, the first event that we had, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson joined us, but for some reason, he was not available to attend the Camp Gladiator Boot Camp on Saturday. But there were two city staff members that were at that workout with us, and we had several vendors, and they had drawings for free, two free months, and it was just a really neat event. So if you happen to miss that, fear not, there are two opportunities this weekend at Body Toners on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. There's a free cardio Zumba class, and if you join that day, you get a discount on your first month's membership. And then on Sunday at 3:00 p.m., you can go to Jazzercise at, at 3:00. And if you come, and you'll be working out with me, both at Body Toners and at Jazzercise. And if you join that day, you get February free. So come watch me sweat, and I'm not nearly as good at Jazzercise as I was as making it through the boot camp. And HT Fitness is sponsoring an event on Saturday, February 2nd. So those are all posted. Please come out and participate. And if you are a registered user, be sure that you are recording your healthy eating habits and any of the exercise because you'll help us get points. We were in second, and I think right before I came in, we had fallen to third. Some of these people are really serious. Smithville is in the extra small towns, and they have more points than some of the medium-sized towns. I mean, they are, and apparently, you don't leave a Smithville meeting until you've posted a picture of you drinking water and eating something health. She said it's, they're pretty intense, but they're getting lots of points. But I would encourage everyone to participate. Then between January 10th and January 22nd, what I was planning on doing, and I actually did, I attended the CrossFit Cohesion Ribbon Cutting. Several of us went to the Alive After Five, which was, happened to be at A+ Fitness for the Chamber, and they too are going to sponsor an ITT event. On the 12th was our first event, and as I said, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson was there. On the 15th, I went to the school board meeting, and then I also went to the promotion ceremony for Fire Chief Rosales and Sergeant Hamrick. It was really nice to see those guys and be a part of their celebration. If you missed the Addams Family last weekend, you really missed out. And we must point out that Councilmember Rogers' son was a star of that show. And as she said, he's the only one dressed normal because he's the boyfriend. But he had a great voice and did a great job, and it was a lot of fun. Already talked about Camp Gladiator and MLK, and here we are at council. Tomorrow, I will be attending the BISD Ambassador Lunch. There's another ribbon cutting. Boards and Commission, there's mandatory training Thursday evening. I know all of you've received emails and reminders, so you'll get an opportunity to spend some time with the city attorney and myself. Friday morning, I'll be at the Best Breakfast. Saturday morning, I'll be at Body Toners. Saturday evening, I'll be at the Sportsman's Banquet. I'm on the next page, Colin. I'll be at the Sportsman's Banquet, which is why I then need to go to Jazzercise on Sunday. There's a BEDC Monthly Meeting on Monday. We are hosting the TML Small Cities Problem Solving. It'll be at the Convention Center on the 31st. On February 2nd, the HT Fitness Event is at 10:00 a.m. And then the SIP Shop and Swirl is that evening. Library Board, Chamber Luncheon, Farm Street Opry, Chamber Banquet on the 8th, and then we'll be back for City Council. That is all that I had. Councilmember Ennis, would you like to report anything?
I think you can.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Pretty well, it's an understatement. Just, Mayor, City Manager, Member of the Council, you know, we belong to the Clean Air Coalition, and y'all have been gracious enough to volunteer me for that group to represent our city. I was, again, volunteered to be on their funding subcommittee, and we met on the 18th to continue finding ways to address regional air pollution issues, and I will have an update for council as well as the city manager for that next week. On Friday, I attended the Capillary Rural Transportation Planning Organization, or CARCO. And two subjects were of interest to, to me and to this body. One was the regional flood data and regional resources that are available through this organization, as well as flood risk management. And the second was relative to the grant opportunities from TechDOT on transportation alternatives, as well as safe routes to school. I furnished that information to our city manager for her action is deemed necessary. And then again, as the mayor said, it was, I was honored to attend the march and celebration program for Martin Luther King. And echo the mayor's comments, that those six, six young ladies really gave me a lot of hope for our future. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Peterson? All right, City Manager, do you have anything to report? Okay, we don't have any work sessions or briefings. Moving right along, we're on staff reports. I'm on Item 6A, Received Presentation on the Quarterly Investment Report for the period ending December 31st, 2018. Ms. Waldron?
See if I can. So this is, looks like I posted the wrong visual up there, but the correct one is in your packet. This is the report ending December 31st, 2018. I cut and pasted that this morning. So our ending balance, as of September, was 21 million point eight. Now it is almost 31 million. It's an increase of about $2 million in our, in our portfolio, and the majority of that increase comes from the property taxes that we've been receiving over the last several months. I did want to point out, we have 165,000 in interest income for these three months, and same period last year, we had about 80,000. So we have seen a significant increase in interest income over our investments. Our investments are broken down into money market accounts, the demand deposits, which are all both 1%. We have about 52% in CDs and securities, and 46% in our pooled accounts.
Ms. Waldron? Did you say 21 million, or looking at this, looks like it's?
2 million. Increase?
I thought... Ask your question again, because she didn't know which, which number did you think was 21 million?
I thought you said we ended up, September, with 22 million, 22 million.
28.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify, because I'm looking at the 28, 875 number.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And for the public, what Ms. Waldron's saying is she's pulled the wrong report. So if you're watching the TV, it's the wrong report, but if you go to the packet that's published, it has the accurate data.
Yes.
Council, any further questions for Ms. Waldron?
I want to applaud the good work she's doing on this.
Great work all the way around, Ms. Waldron. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Item 6B, Received Presentation on the Unaudited Monthly Financial Report for the period ending December 31st, 2018.
Well, my cook is...
Colin, she's got a, I'm not happy look on her face.
Well, it was working a second ago, and it's decided not to work. So, oh, here we go. So this is the comprehensive financial report, ending December 31st, 2018. As you can see, I do have a few funds that are under warning category. The rest of them are all positive. You're going to have to do it from back there. Thank you. As far as the economic indicators, everything that U.S. and the Texas resale, retail sales is both positive, and unemployment is also in the positive category. Under the budgeted summary of all funds in the revenue, we do have a warning under water wastewater revenue and also under our impact fund revenues. The water wastewater will be covered later on in the presentation. The impact funds, just based on the forecast, we're just slightly behind where we forecasted those to be. Due to development forecasting, those come from development, we're just... On the expense side, we just have one, still water wastewater, goes back to the filters that were purchased in October. This will actually be addressed in a budget amendment in February to level off that fund. General fund revenues and expenses, the general fund is a net positive, almost 16% to forecast. Ms. Waldron?
That's a million-dollar jump in a month, the way I'm reading that. So is it driven by property tax?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the majority of what we get in December, January, and a little bit more in February.
I want to use this as an opportunity to explain why impact fees are a challenge. Impact fees, we don't have a clue are going to happen until the development community shows up and brings us a plan. Property taxes are billed, I believe, in September and October, and you have until the end of January to pay them. Some people will pay them in December because they want that tax write-off in the 2018 income tax. Some people will pay them in 2019 because they need that deduction in 2019. But at the conclusion of January, the bulk of, the majority of the property taxes should be available to us. So when we forecast, we really should be at 98 or 99% in January, and anything beyond that is just delinquent tax collections that happen. So we can forecast based on that. Quarterly sales tax is one that every third month, the sales tax should be higher than the previous two months, and those are trends that help Tracy be able to, with confidence, offer some predictability. But there are just a few of these that they're nothing more than really a guesstimate, and that's why some of the forecasting is a little tricky.
But this one's not forecasted.
All of it is.
Everything is forecasted.
But it's not, well, I thought this is, I thought you're reporting this is what you collected. I thought this number, yeah.
Those are actuals, but they are being weighted against what we forecasted to where we think we will be at this point in time.
Okay, but I, then I'm not understanding this chart.
That's just how the percentages work out at the bottom.
Because I think this chart is revenue, expenses, and then the variance between revenue and expenses. So this particular chart doesn't have any forecast in it.
Yeah, it does. Where it has cumulative forecasts, so I still stick the forecast in there, and I basically do a percentage, I do a percentage against the forecasted to the actual to get kind of where we should be at this point in time, revenue and expense. And then in the next two slides, I break out what revenue is a little bit more detail and what expenses.
Everything above the brown line is actual numbers.
I understand that. And so what I'm saying, though, is right now, today, I can't tell what you're forecasting to collect in January, looking at this chart.
Yes, it's right there, an accumulative forecast at the bottom of the, of the charts.
That's going to tell me what you are predicting to forecast in January.
Forecast is for the year-to-date. It's always year-to-date. So it's accumulative.
But this is December 31st data, right?
Right.
And I totally understand that, so that's October, November, and December. You did a forecast, and you're comparing what you collected to what your forecast was. What I'm saying is, right now, looking at this chart, I, I can't tell what you are forecasting in January, but you know what you're forecasting, but you can't tell by looking at this chart what you are forecasting that revenue number to be in January.
Not for that one month. It's always a running cumulative year-to-date number.
That's right, because these are decibels financials, so they only deal with the forecast of December, not future forecast.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, is there's no future forecast for January, February, March to the end of the month on this chart. There's only a, how we did.
Correct.
Through the, what you're reporting, which in this case, isn't through the end of January. It's through December 31st.
Right, but if we can go to the next slide, like for the breakout, I already, I've already plugged in the forecasting for the sales tax revenue. So sales tax is almost 2% actual against forecast.
I got you. And then your, and your property tax is real heavily forecasted for December, January. Yep, okay.
And so I've plugged them in. Year-to-date, we're, again, almost 2% actual to forecast positive. Water wastewater fund, both the revenue and the expenses are running by negative net, and each one of them is addressed separately. The revenue is running about 3% actual to forecast and negative 3%. And, whoops. I don't have the expenses broken out. But I do, the expenses were quite a bit off coming into this month, but it's starting to level out, but I've already gotten with the department, and we will be bringing a budget amendment for that.
I'd like for you to point out to the folks at home that a lot of that expense, what drove that expense up was the emergency filters for the water treatment.
So we did have, yes, we purchased quite a few filters up front. We actually had used the majority of those, so I've asked the water wastewater department to project how much more they feel like they're going to need for the rest of the year, which is the amendment that you will be seeing probably at the next meeting.
We had to use those because of the flooding we had.
Yes, they were having to be changed much... And the hotel occupancy tax revenue to expense is almost 30% to the net positive, the fund as a whole. The majority of that is in the expense column. Hotel occupancy tax revenue, this is just the, the revenue we collect from the hotel, the hotels. This is almost exactly break even. It's only about 5,000 off from actual to forecast. I do want to point out that I do, I've been looking at year-to-date, you know, from one year to the next, so we are running slightly behind what we were last year at this time. And then the legal fees broken out to end the report.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Any other questions, council? Good job, Ms. Waldron. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 6C, Received Monthly Development Update. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. This is my second report to you all. So I think the first month, we went over our mission and our purpose statement for the department. So this is for November and December for our department up front. This is just kind of our daily metrics, if you will. So we had in November and December, 364 counter visits. It puts us at about 600 for the year. Permits issued since our last update were 176. And then we had 28 pre-application meetings in November and December, and that's on top of the, the time we had off, thankfully, for Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. So just a few more things that were to go over. We had some new certificates of occupancy issued. One of them was for the Copper Shot Distillery and Tasting Room at 809 Main Street. We had Bastrop Tile on State Highway 304, the Bastrop Birthing Center, and that's on Settlement Boulevard. That's kind of north of Highway 71, kind of east of the Lowes, if I had to familiarize myself with that area. And then, of course, our new car wash, a Rapid Express Car Wash there on 74 Old Austin Highway. Some commercial projects I want to give you an update on. We have our Stem and Stone, that's a new restaurant. It's currently under construction on the 1500 block of Chestnut Street, so just down to the east of City Hall here. They're relatively close to the Chick-fil-A, so they're under construction now and doing some renovations on that. We have our Seaton Hospital. They have, obviously, their silt fencing and their, their construction fencing, and that's what you're seeing on the south side with the, the big, large crane getting to the wall. That's about a 40,000 square foot hospital. Three, or 365 mini-storage. They've started on their earthwork, and they'll be moving forward with their project going vertical and getting things in the ground as well. Again, that's about 100,000 square foot total building, and I believe roughly about 600 storage units is what they'll be offering. Ma'am? Yes, so the mini-storage is on the south side of Highway 71, right next to the, the car wash, I believe. It's in between the car wash and the Wendy's. Jennifer, am I right? If I have my...
Yeah, it's on the front of the road.
Getting squared away, so yeah. And I can start adding some, some addresses would be helpful in the future, I believe. And then our Lost Pines Professional Building, that is on Old Austin Highway. It's over by Bastrop Intermediate, Sherwin-Williams. You'll see some silt fencing up there and some, some moving the dirt. And so that's two professional office buildings totaling about 8,000 square foot total between the two buildings. So those are our commercial projects that we have going right now to date. Our residential products, we have Pecan Park and Piney Creek Bend. Those are our two residential subdivisions currently under construction. Pecan Park, under development, so in between the plating stage, then putting in the public infrastructure, save, we have not accepted those public improvements. So getting ready to deliver to the development community is what we're kind of... Lots. And in Pecan Park, there are 84 lots currently under development, getting ready to deliver to the, to the city. So they have the, the streets going in, the wet utilities, things of that nature. So they've been approved, they're under construction, but the city has not yet, yet accepted them and... has not yet, yet accepted them and, and for them to be ready to be delivered to the building community. But that's 84 lots. And then Piney Creek Bend is our other residential subdivision, and that's 77 lots for their Phase 1. So, single-family residential in the pipeline, we have 161 lots under construction, ready to be delivered to, to the city, or being, being built. We have two multifamily projects, a preserve at Hunter's Crossing. That one's kind of hit a snag with the, the wet weather we've had, and so they haven't yet gone vertical. So they're experiencing some delays. That's 140 units for multifamily housing. And then we also have the villages at Hunter's Crossing, and they, they are the ones that you'll have seen, and they've gone vertical and have some exterior finishes on the buildings as well. And that's 182 units. So 322 units of multifamily, added with the 161, single families for a total of 483 units in the pipeline, getting ready to be, to be delivered to the building community. We did have some training. David Brasic, our building official, attended his mechanical plans review course, and then also got his mechanical plans examiner certification. So we're thrilled to have that. And again, we are just thrilled to have David in our department. He's doing some outstanding work. Just some things that we attended. Our staff attended the Campo Regional Arterials Planning Workshop. Most of our staff was heavily involved in our design rodeos for building Bastrop. We attended the Boards and Commissions Awards Banquet, which was my first one, and, and we enjoyed it immensely. And then, of course, as, as the mayor pointed out, we, we try to attend all, if not most of, the chamber luncheons. So that was some of the things that we've been up to as far as staff and attendance. So at this point, I'll welcome any questions or comments.
Matt, you gave us some really great information, and I was writing it down. Is it possible for you to summarize that and send it out to Council, so that if we're repeating those numbers, we're all repeating the same numbers?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Would that be helpful to you, Council?
I can do that.
Great job. Really, really good information. Councilmember Ennis?
This is going to show my ignorance. Are the impact fees paid by the developer on, say, Con Park, Piney Creek Bend, or are those paid by the individuals that, that buy the homes?
Those, the, for Piney Creek, that was, no, you said Pecan Park.
Either one.
Either one.
I'm just wondering where in the
They pay them upfront. We just
The developer pays them.
Yes, and we just updated that to where it's a percentage of the public utility or the public infrastructure being put in. No, those are the inspection fees. I apologize. But those are, the impact fees are paid upfront.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Ennis, it's a part of that development process, and the reason we collect them upfront is sometimes we have to make infrastructure improvements, and that gives the city the money to make the improvements while they're building the subdivision, so everything's together, ready at the same time, ideally.
I just didn't know.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, to your point, even though those lots are coming online, that's not going to, we won't see that change in the financials that Tracy was showing, because they've already been paid.
And were likely paid last fiscal year, because once they pay them, it takes some time to get them deliverable to the building community.
Yeah, the, the developer pays them way upfront. That doesn't mean it's not in the price of the house, but it means that they write the check upfront.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Great job. Really good update. Really good information. Appreciate it. I'm now on item 6D, receive monthly report from Visit Bastrop. Got Susan Smith, and Catherine Lang, and Ashton. Is everybody, are y'all doing tag team, or who's presenting tonight?
Her.
Tag team. All right, we're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Your cedar fever has taken a liking to me.
Now you're a Texan.
So I apologize upfront.
Now you're a Texan.
I know. I'm, I'm in it. I'm in it to win it. I'm sorry. What I'd like to do, first of all, is we're going to go over our November and December's President's Report, and then we will, we didn't present in December. And then we will also review our business plan for the remaining eight months of our fiscal year for Visit Bastrop. I first like to introduce Catherine Lang. She's our new Director of Sales. We are so excited to have her on board, and she's going to say a little bit.
I was just going to say hello.
Catherine, you have to say it into the mic, or no one can hear you.
Good evening. I'm just absolutely thrilled to be a part of the dynamic team of Visit Bastrop. It's exciting. Got great things in store.
And Ashton Lefuente will go over, she's our marketing manager, and she will review the first parts of each President's Report, starting with November.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Let's just hop right in here to the first page. We're going to give a health report on this, on our, on our website and social media. As you guys know, we started our website this time last year, so I'm happy to bring to you some year-over-year metrics. If you'll look in this grid to the right-hand side, you'll see last year's numbers in the gray, and then this year's numbers in the green. So really good increase on the website. We're really happy to see that. Some of our top referrals for the month of November was the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines. They generated almost 7,000 sessions, so that helps us determine what we want to craft for our page to get our users what they need. Some of our top organic landing pages for the month of November were the Heroes and Hot Rods Veterans Day Car Show Event, obviously, and then our homepage and our Things to Do. Down at the bottom is just kind of a health report on our social media. You can see our total following in the first column, and then in the second column, a little bit of growth. We watch that. We kind of have a big following in Facebook, so not a lot of movement there. And then the impressions on the right-hand side. So that's our website health. And then moving on to page three, is a public relations summary for the month of November. So what we, a lot of what we did in November for PR was to try to garner some really good coverage for the Veterans Day Car Show event. So as you can see, we were, you know, we had 31 clippings, which mean we were a part of 31 articles talking about the Veterans Day Car Show, and then the estimated total coverage and monthly visits to each one of those publications. The secured coverage, if you see in the bullet points there, that's the publication that the coverage was secured in, and then you can see the monthly visits to that site, and then how many people were likely to read the actual article that came out. So just some rough numbers for you to see there. Great coverage for the Veterans Day Car Show, we think. Moving on to page four, is more of some of the proactive stuff that we do. We try to pitch Bastrop as a destination proactively to garner some really good coverage. And as you can see, we got four articles that were generated, one specifically about the Hyatt Regency Lost Pines New Year's Eve Experience, dog-friendly events, Lost Pines Christmas is somewhere you can bring your dog and come walk the River of Light, so we garnered some coverage there, as well as Lost Pines Christmas and holiday markets in the Austin area. Moving on to page five, is just a highlight of the Lost Pines Christmas submissions. So what we did is we packaged all of the Lost Pines Christmas stuff, and we sent it out to all of the calendar listings across the state of Texas. And this bullet-pointed list is where our event was picked up. So if anyone went to any of these publications looking for the Lost Pines Christmas, they would have found it there. And then down on the bottom, just a little bit of coverage there for the Twisted Christmas. It was a new event, but we, we pitched it, and we garnered some coverage for that as well. So that's kind of the health of our marketing efforts for the month of November. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Ashton, Council, any questions for?
All right. I'm going to go over the Lodging Industry Report for, this is actually for the month of October. It's always a month behind. I just really want to point out here, if you take a look at our ADR, for Bastrop, it's $169.83, and the average is $121.80. So I just want to remind everyone that that number is always going to be pretty high because of the Hyatt Lost Pines, and their rates are so much higher than what we traditionally have. We are looking at redoing some of our comparables in our industry report. So right now, we have, in order to, you have to have like 12 comparables in order to make a report. So we are now going, we had to put one in from Elgin that was similar size. So we'll be taking that out, and we'll be adding the LCRA and the state parks. So we'll have a much more truer picture of what we're really comparing ourselves to. So I just want to point that out on, on that, that everything else is, is fairly normal and average. Our next one is our sales report. This is this, I think, our second month that we are starting this. This is to give you an idea of what's happened in the month of November. So we're starting to track our leads, our service requests, and service requests, again, our requests that come in that don't have any room nights associated with them. So maybe transportation, or catering, or something like that. Our definites, and then our lead room nights that we put out. So we had one lead that came in for 505 room nights, and we had one definite service request, which was a contract value of $20,000. And we hope to see with, and we'll go into December's with the next report, and we're going to see these numbers go, since Catherine's been here, they're already grown just in the last couple of weeks. So they will continue to grow every month. So Ashton will now go with, over the December President's Report, marketing.
All righty, let's do this again. Okay, so for, on page two, okay, here we are. December, so we started our website in November of last year, but we had started it kind of in the middle of the month. So December is truly our first month of year-over-year, full year-over-year data. So 194% increase in our traffic, which is great. We're generating almost 10,000 organic sessions a month, which is great. Obviously, for the month of December, our highly-trafficked pages were about the holidays, so the Lost Pines Christmas, New Year's Eve, and the River of Light. And then just to highlight on our top cities, people that are looking at, at us are, the biggest chunk of the pie is Austin, followed by Houston and Dallas, and then San Antonio, and then some of our closer friends like Round Rock and Elgin. Down the bottom, again, is just a health status on our, our social media. You'll see right here in the red is just a slight decrease in Facebook following. It's natural. It's a, like I said, we carry a really high following in Facebook, so we watch that, but that 0.8% is not really alarming. It's the holidays. We hope people are spending more time with their family and less on social media. So, just a, a good update there on that. On to page three. Again, we, we generated a lot of our holiday coverage in November, but we also did some of it in December as well. So not as many clippings this month, but again, some really good proactive pitching for the holidays. We garnered some coverage on Fox 7 and Austin 360, about, you know, Fest of Towns located less than two hours from Austin. And then on to page four, some more coverage for the holidays. CBS Austin, we had the mayor come out with us, and we did the My Hometown, which was really cool out at Lost Pines. Thank you, Mayor. And then some proactive outreach down at the bottom. Unique events that are dog-friendly, just some really good coverage during the holidays when there's not a whole lot to talk about. So that's it for December. Any questions on that, on December's report?
Council, any questions for Ashton? Good job. Thank you.
You're obviously doing a good job of getting the, getting the word out there, in my opinion.
Lodging Industry Report, again, reporting for the month of November. ADR is down a little bit, but in comparison to our comparables, it's, remains average. And all, all other numbers, occupancy is average. Really, no big changes and nothing to really be concerned about in that month. So, any questions on that? In our sales report for that month, we had one lead that came in for 160 room nights, and we had one ser, one service request in one definite. And the contract value on the, on the, on the definite was a room block, so we don't have, we don't know that number until they leave, until how many actual rooms that they are taking. So again, you'll see that these reports will get much more robust as we move along. So that's it for our December's President's Report. If anyone has any questions, or not, I'll move on to our plan. I'm very excited about this plan. This is a very aggressive plan. We only have eight months left. I apologize, the type is so small. But we have only eight months left in our fiscal year, and we have a lot that we're going to do, so we're, we're very excited about it. Just to quickly review, that our mission is to stimulate the economic growth of this city by marketing Bastrop region as a vibrant visitor destination, including conventions, meetings, outdoor recreation, and special events. I want to just remind everyone out there that travel and tourism is one of the fastest-growing economic sectors in the globe. It plays a vital role in the development of emerging destinations. And the industry employs close to 100 million people, representing 3% of the global employment. It, it pays to promote travel and tourism, and, and that's what we're doing. The, the Visit Bastrop DMO is funded through the hotel occupancy taxes, you all know, and operates on a fiscal calendar year from October to September. One thing I want to point out is that this, this business plan has been developed, it's an action-oriented plan, forward-thinking, encompasses all the segments of travel and tourism industry to reinforce our position as a genuine destination. It's an aggressive plan. It's a dynamic plan. It's going to lay the plant, the foundation for our success in the future. Visit Bastrop and the Board of Directors will guide this plan along with myself, and will make carefully planned changes in our strategy as we feel necessary in order to strengthen our position within the tourism industry. The objectives of our plan, I'll just highlight a few. Obviously, again, to just restate that Visit Bastrop serves as an economic engine for the city of Bastrop, and we are looking to increase demand in Bastrop in 12 different sectors. Those sectors are arts, nightlife, restaurants, venues and weddings, outdoor recreation, retail, film, the Hyatt Lost Pines, history, sports, meetings, events, motor coach, which is a new one for us, and I will talk about that in a bit, and hotel lodging, as well as any other events and activities that affect our economic impact. We want to increase the visibility of Bastrop among our travelers, establish Bastrop as a preferred destination, and increase and incite travel to Bastrop, increase visitor spending in these markets that we will be It's also important to note that the economic outlook is very strong. Domestic travelers are favoring destinations close to home. That works well for us, because we have such a large drive market. Ease of travel, followed by food and dining, are the top factors when selecting a leisure travel destination. And travelers also desire a familiar location, and with six in 10 visiting a destination that they've been to previously. So we want Bastrop, we want Bastrop for them to remember. Next, how are we going to go about doing this? We have, we utilize our brand strategy as we deliver our plans and methodology, our brand and creative strategy. A well-defined executed brand strategy affects all aspects of the business. It's directly connected to consumer needs, emotions, and to the competitive environment. Our creative strategy is our, will be our marketing efforts that will be centered around a robust, a robust rollout of Welcome to It All. And we're going to be tailoring our messaging and our imagery to invite those target audiences to always feel invited and welcomed. And continuing on with the plans and methodology, the campaign concept is the overarching big idea that captures audiences' interests, influencers, and their emotional response. It inspires them to take action. Welcome to it all is catchy and compelling. It conjures up images of things that make our destination attractive to travelers. We've identified as, our target audiences are, again, are those 12 market sectors that we've identified as the right audiences for our area. Next is business associations. This gives Visit Bastrop the opportunity to network and share information and resources among all of the experts out within our field. So we have added a few new business associations, and, and also have a few that we stayed with from the year before. One of the newer ones being the American Bus Association, which is ABA, and Catherine is heading to ABA on Saturday. So Visit Bastrop will have a first-time presence at ABA, and she will be doing meeting with bus tour operators in like a speed dating format, where you do it like super quick, like five minutes each, to get our message out there. So, but we also have, there's lots of other networking times, so you can meet with other tour operators. And I've connected her with some of my old colleagues that are going to show her the ropes. So we're very excited to get this new market buzzing. Our, our budget continues to scrutinize all the programs, pay careful attention to those that don't directly impact the hot funds. Our controls are, are monitored by CFO by design, by the Board of Directors, and as well as any, our financial committees. I don't, for some reason, the budget didn't make it into this presentation, but I have it. Do you have it in your pockets? You do? Okay. I have it. If anybody wants to see it, they can feel free to give me a call. Anyone else? Anyone else? But you have it? Yeah, it's not in there. There's been no change to the original budget that was presented when I, before I arrived. So there's been no changes.
Susan, what I noticed-
Oh, there it is!
Yeah.
Oh, yay!
It's in our packet, but I think as you go through, things are off by a line.
Okay.
I notice pretty consistently, so.
Okay.
But it's just formatting, but.
Okay. Well, again, nothing really has changed in terms of what was presented to you when Dale was here. The bottom line still remains the same. A few of the items have shifted around a little bit in terms of, we had thought there was going to be an impending move of our office this year. So instead of actually moving, we've done some renovation to the building to accommodate the extra staff.
Susan, if you don't mind, Counsel, if you haven't been over there, it's worth going by and saying hi. They've got, y'all have done a great job-
Thank you.
-with really cleaning that up. It looks very professional. They've got a great rug when you walk in, that shows their logo, and it just, I think you guys have done a really good job.
We even shopped with points.
There you go.
So again, our net income at 1.5, total expenses at 1.3. We have our reserve, and then our operating reserve, so really, again, nothing has changed.
I notice you don't have the Texas Society of Association Executives on your business associations. Is that not a market you're working?
Not for the remaining eight months. I'm going to look at it again next year. We are looking at ASAE, as well as, that would be T, yes. We did, I did a little trimming of some of the associations, so that we could afford to do some more work in the newer markets.
Well, I've realized without a hotel attached, the convention center, TSAE might be a hard sell.
Yeah.
So, I was just wondering.
Any questions on the budget before I move forward? Okay. Revenue enhancement plans, as part of our agreement with the city, is to start developing some additional ways to have some revenue coming in. And one of the ways that we're looking at is some new technology, which will be electric vehicle charging stations in downtown.
So she's looking at me, because we were all at TML together, and we were like, this is the greatest idea ever!
I'd like to say this was my own idea!
So I brought that information back. City Manager was at TML, I know that she had had some plans for some locations, but I had a conversation with Susan. Turns out Susan has a background and knows a lot about them, and she allowed me to participate with a call with her, and prices have really gone down, and there's all kinds of options. I know the timing needs to be worked out with improvements along Main Street and locations, and there'll be some things to coordinate, but I particularly, Councilmember Ennis, I think all of us, when we were walking around at TML, saw that one booth, and were encouraged by that, and Susan thought it was a great idea as well.
Mayor and Counsel, the parking lot at Spring and Main, you might envision that in context of your focus areas, multimodal. We're working with carts to do a bus stop there. There will be bike share there, so you ultimately be able to ride mass transportation and have bike sharing. We think that would be a great place to put these electric vehicle charging stations. And my comment to Susan was, BP&L sells electricity all day long, we'd be more than happy to sell her all the power, she wants to then upsell for electric charging, so we think that is a match made in heaven. But begin to think about that corner as really the manifestation of your focus area of multimodal downtown, and a way to really get some synergy in and make that work.
And Counsel, you'll recall that there were some really neat things. You can get them with the video camera, where they could be-
Sponsored.
If you're plugging in your car, it's telling you about the event, and you can change that out with software. And I was pretty impressed with, they really have it, to your point, City Manager, just bring the power to the spot, they need a concrete pad, and get out of their way, and they do everything else, so.
Right. And it's very interesting that the market for electric vehicle, for the electric vehicle cars, that they seek out where the charging stations are. And on an industry average, they spend more than 40 minutes longer in a destination than the average gasoline car would spend, because they're waiting for it to charge. So having those in downtown will be ideal.
And it's when you buy an electric car, they'll, there's like the little card, and it would list Bastrop as one of the places that you could go get a charge. I mean, it's its own industry kind of thing, and it was a package deal, so I was really glad that Susan was like, oh yeah, I know all about this. So we had a couple calls, and-
May not get it this year, but maybe next year.
Yeah, timing's got to be right, because we don't want to bring them down where they can't drive their car, because we're tearing up the road, but we'll-
Exactly.
Get taken care of. But I was excited, and mainly, Counsel, since we had spent some time in the exhibit hall, and were impressed with that, it was kind of nice to see that that could be in our future plans. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
So other revenue enhancement plans, our marketing collateral, we'll be putting together a meeting planner guide that we will be able to take out to the meeting planner industry, directly speaking to that audience, which is the meeting planners themselves. And then the visitor guides for the leisure traveler, we'll be putting together two different type of guides. Cooperative advertising is something that'll be super exciting, that's going to be where we can bring in national advertising to our partners here in Bastrop by negotiating lower fees, and doing some bundled discounted rates with the Visit Bastrop buying power. So that'll get some of our properties that may not be able to afford a full page in a meetings magazine, really getting Bastrop out there. I've had success with it in the past, and it really works very well. Other promotions, and then one that we're really excited about is retail. So we were looking at selling Visit Bastrop branded items, caps, t-shirts, mugs, pillows. I say that to the City Manager, she's like, we should have some pillows. We're looking at partnering with the Visitor Center. I've also spoken with some of the retailers downtown, and they're very excited about it. So if you all recall, we had a, some of our logos are dynamic and fluid, and there was like, the tree, and then the sun, and all the different ones. Well, we have one that like has a guitar, so then maybe that's going to be a limited-edition t-shirt during the music festival. So we have a lot of fun, creative ways around that to promote those items. So we're working locally, trying to get those up and going.
Should do something with the toads, they are extremely popular.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And that would be a good tie with the Visitor Center, and, just a thought.
Okay, DMAP, Destination Marketing Accreditation Program. It's a globally-recognized program. It serves as a visible industry distinction that defines quality and performance standards within a destination marketing organization. So we have been setting up Visit Bastrop to be able to take part in that accreditation program. We're not allowed to take part until we've been at least two years in existence, so have had marketing expertise. So all of our financials and everything that we're doing is setting us up to be ready, so when we apply, it won't take as long. So it'll be, it'll be great to become certified. So all those have been put in place. Community relations, you know, this could be a really long slide, and again, I apologize that the type is so small, but we've been super busy. We've been collaborating with the local EDC to build messaging, working with Fallon, Fallon, I always say it wrong, and synergies between the traditional economic development strategies and our tourism-related strategies. So we're working together on that, and I guess we also attend the Chamber of Commerce events. We work closely with the city offices, not limited to the police parks and the convention center, so we're doing a lot of partnerships with them for different events that are coming into town. And we provide our monthly tourism reports, our monthly meeting reports, our monthly meetings to City Council. And we also have $75,000 in hotel occupancy funding for programs for local groups and initiatives that might, may want to do something that can help get heads and beds here in Bastrop, maybe an event, or a meeting, or a conference. So we have finalized all of the documents that are necessary for that. And those can be found on our website.
Counsel, Susan had asked me, and I would like your feedback on, I know that their contract currently requires them to report monthly, but she talked about her President's Report, a lot of times there's not big changes monthly, and so do you have a problem if she changes that to quarterly? Is it, does anyone have thoughts or inputs on that?
Personally, I like the monthly report.
Okay, Mr. Ennis is a monthly, Mr. Peterson was a quarterly, Mayor Protem Nelson's quarterly, Ms. Rogers?
Well, I'm kind of on the fence, because a lot of the report is vast, I mean, you have a huge report, so a lot of the, like the community relations and everything could be quarterly, but, you know, all the statistics and stuff, and the spending, and the hotel occupancy, that part, I would like to see monthly. You know, so maybe they could just give a report on just the activity part, and then all this vast, and all your huge report, just do that quarterly.
Like a blend?
Well, the industry, that's the piece that doesn't change, is, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, how many people are in hotels? How many people are in hotels? How your Facebook is hitting, that changes.
Oh, the marketing, yes.
That's the part I was thinking, that part, if we can see monthly, because that's kind of reflects on how your job's doing on a monthly basis, and then I could see doing the big part on a quarterly.
So maybe like a hybrid, is that making sense to you?
Sure.
Would you be okay with that, Mr. Ennis?
Saying the media-public relations monthly, and the rooms quarterly?
Well, no, all the rooms and the media stuff, all monthly, and all their budget, and their relationship, and all their plans, quarterly.
Oh, I don't need, yeah, I'm just talking about-
What we're doing now, I think, is working.
Media and rooms is what I was talking about.
I'm fine with continuing to go monthly.
Okay.
Let's do that for a while.
Okay. So we don't need it to be this big of a report every month.
One of the other things that we have partnered with is we have partnered with the city of Bastrop for cosponsorship of some training for the downtown merchants. Government affairs, Visit Bastrop provides and will provide legislative updates covering the issues that matter most to our tourism and meeting and events community, outreach to the community on any agendas that we think could affect their business proactively, and updating our community as new laws and regulations take effect, so that businesses can comply. Market plans, each one of the 12 markets that I mentioned to you, all will have, we've identified those, and then we've also identified eight different performance indicators to, eight performance indicators, and there's, let me say that over again, we have 12 markets with eight performance, each has eight performance indicators. So the eight performance indicators are listed up there, and so we will be able to, on a monthly basis, talk about the, again, the PR pitches and the reach, the social media, number of events, search engine marketing, newsletters, trade show leads, and repeat business. So these are the ways that we are going to check on our performance and make sure that we're continuing along the path we need to be. And I will mention that the reason why there is not each 12 segment, market segment plans outlined here for each one, is that we are in a very highly-competitive industry, and to put all of the work that we pay our agencies for, and pay our employees to do, and to put this in writing out to the public, would, other communities could just help themselves and take advantage of our successes. So, and if anybody wants to see the detail, they're more than welcome to come to my office, and I'll show you, and we have it laid out. All right, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Counselor Rogers?
I have a question, what was your training for the downtown merchants?
We haven't had it yet.
Oh, I thought you-
No, we sponsored it, we've sponsored it to have them come, but I think it was supposed to happen perhaps first quarter this year, but maybe it's going to be pushed around a little bit.
Okay, so you sponsored it, but it hasn't happened yet?
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't-
That will be, I would imagine, Rebecca. Hi, Rebecca.
Mayor Protem Nelson, did you have a question?
Yeah, could you expand a little bit more on the benefits of the motor coach industry? It seems like to me it'd be day trips and not a whole lot of heads and beds. Am I reading that wrong?
Well, some can be two- and three-day trips, so this could be like the end of a day, where they could come for the end of the day, spend the night, do something in the morning, and then head out. Some of them are day trips, it is a new market for us, so we will be able to get some better ideas on what the kind of numbers we're looking at. Our hope is to at least get the people into Bastrop and have them come back. But initially, it's, how we package it, and we'll determine, like if we have a two-day package or a one-day package, and what the market holds. It's a brand-new market for us, so when Catherine gets back from ABA, we'll probably be full of information.
Mayor Protem, we actually had a motor coach during Christmas stop at the Bastrop Opera House. So this is where our local assets could be of real benefit to Visit Bastrop by putting together a package, so that the museum has something for them to view and display. There would be some kind of play going on at the Opera House, there could be some kind of activity at the Lost Pines Art Center, and they would be able to leverage that, so as these groups are passing through, there's a reason for them to stop in Bastrop and spend a night or two. But we were all pretty surprised, because I happened to see the motor coach coming down Main Street, and I asked staff, I said, I wonder where they were going, and staff was out and about that evening, and I got a call, and they said, oh my gosh, they're at the Opera House, and we got a full room, and it was sold out. And so that's a way that our local assets could really make a difference with this industry.
And the beauty of that is, all the locals get to enjoy all those same programs, so I appreciate that. Any other questions? You've done a great job on your business plan. It's really nice to see it, and-
And if anyone has any questions, please come see me or give me a call.
Fantastic. All right, it is 7:36, and I have been asked to take a five-minute break, so it's 7:36, and we are in a quick recess. And we are back in session. We are at Citizens Comments, and I have Doc Jackson signed up to speak. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilman, City Manager. I just had to come in personally, on behalf of the Bastrop County Martin Luther King Holiday Commission, thank you all for all the wonderful cooperation and the support that you gave us in our 30th annual walk. I mean, your participation yesterday in the walk and at the program was just exceptional. I mean, I don't think we've had that many council members or people that participated, our staff participating in any of our walks in the past, and I was just very pleased with that. Also, the City Manager's committee involvement, I mean, she came in and rolled up her sleeves and really worked with us, and I hope she stays with us throughout our process of being a part of the committee, she was just, or the commission, she was just outstanding, and I applaud her for that. And she made a lot of things happen that probably, well, that wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for her. The traffic control, the staff, Chief Alkelt, and the video that Collin and Rick did, the support from the convention center, from Kathy and Steve, and just all the staff that were involved were exceptional. And I just applaud you all for making this event the event that it was. A lot of people thought it was the best we've ever done, and it was because of your support, and I just applaud you for that, and just want to thank you for all the wonderful things that y'all did. And thank you.
Thank you, Doc. It was a great event, it was really fun to be a part of it. I don't have anyone else signed up for Citizen Comments, I have the consent agenda, there's only one item, so I'm not going to go through, does anybody want to pull it? Madam Secretary, do you want to read the consent agenda?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the January 8, 2019 regular meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0, thank you, Counsel. We're now moving on to items for individual consideration, we're on item 9A, consider action and approve resolution number R-2019-10 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding specific exceptions and/or exemptions as per- as provided by emergency ordinance 2018-1, Section 8, and emergency ordinance 2018-2, Section 7. Ms. Bills, Council, you have before you two projects and our summary information. I have always promised you that we wouldn't make you vote on something you hadn't had a chance to look at. Are you ready for Ms. Bills to present? Ms. Bills?
Good evening. Uh, we have two items for exemption requests this evening. And the first is at 201 Maynard Street. It's an existing single-family house and they wish to put up a, a solid privacy, uh, wood fence around the backyard. And since fences have, a solid fence like that that goes all the way around has the potential to, uh, create an obstruction for water. That's why it has to come as an exemption. Uh, the lot size is a little over 8,000 square feet. And the engineer letter provided shows, um, that there will be, uh, no impact, uh, for the area. Uh, this is the kind of large area, the house is, uh, faces Maynard and is on the corner of a skew as well. Uh, you can see the drainage in that area is, um, open channel at the ditch. And in this area, the water flows, see, oh, there we go, uh, down Maynard Street, uh, to the, uh, creek, uh, to the east. But there's no impact to the drainage and nothing's being dammed up considerably that would cause any issues in the area. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, this is, I'm passing on citizen questions on this.
Mm-hmm.
On a fence like this, uh, why can't this be administratively, uh, determined without having to pay for an engineer? Uh, with, I mean, if it was something that had a concrete footer that went all the way around it that dammed up the water? But why would this, uh-
When a, when a fence, this is actually a common note that we have on plats when there are drainage easements in an area, that you're not allowed to fence across, uh, drainage facilities. And that's because it, especially when it's a privacy fence like this, there's very little room between the slats. Um, debris can pile up against that fence and cause it to dam up the water. When it's an open fence, um, like a wrought iron fence, you have the ability for water to more, uh, easily flow through. So that's, that was the type of fence and the fact that it did go all the way to the ground so water couldn't go underneath the fence.
So it could be administratively approved if it'd been an open fence?
Yes.
Okay, but since it was close to the ground and a, and a closed fence, it, you had to get the determination engineered?
And, and the engineer actually in their letter did acknowledge that there was the potential for water to pool within the fence, but that it wouldn't, wasn't going to be enough to create an issue in this instance.
Okay, thank you very much. I hope folks heard that explanation.
We're just going to have them all call you, Councilmember Ennis.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I was being not nice. I said, we're just going to have them all call you if they didn't hear it.
That's great, I'll bring it up at council. And I'm, I move to approve.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. That was a good explanation. And seriously, it's the kind of question that all of us get. So it's important that we're consistent and that we're, that we understand why we're doing what we're doing. I have a motion to approve the fence installation of 201 Maynard Street from Councilmember Ennis. And I had a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously and we have a second project.
The second project is at 747 Kaler Cove over in the Riverside Grove neighborhood. Uh, it's also an existing single-family house and they're proposing to add a 338 square foot pool and 406 square feet of concrete around the pool. Um, the lot size is, uh, almost 8,000 square feet. But increase the impervious cover 5.2%, but the runoff increase is estimated to only be .07 cubic feet per second that would be created by the concrete. Uh, this is the larger location, um, of the, uh, lot. It's between Kaler Cove and Jessica Place. It's a s, single-family house and the drainage, uh, runs to a curb and gutter system. Uh, and this is, the, the drainage runs along Kaler Cove and then Jessica Place, um, to the inlet system for the, the very little, um, increase that'll be created.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. So 747 Kaler Cove is approved 5-0 with a unanimous vote. We're now moving on to item 9B. Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. Do a great job of pulling those together. Appreciate all your work. Um, we're on item 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-09 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming a board appointment of the mayor as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Council, I was asked by Brandy Spencer, they had a board member that has resigned due to work. Um, she has a different work situation and she wasn't able to make the meetings. Um, Dolores De Hoya is, um, a resident and would be fulfilling that position. It's, it, when you see it in the packet, it's only through September because she's just filling the rest of the open term so that, um, Ms. Spencer can have a full board.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Resolution number R 2019-09 is approved. We're now moving on to page three on item 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-05 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for and establishing the procedures for a May 4, 2019 general election for Bastrop, Texas, and providing an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 9C is an item to call for and establishing the procedures for the May 4, 2019 general election. Places 1 and 5 are up for election. And the City of Bastrop has five precincts. Precincts 101, I mean, I'm sorry, 1001, 1002, 1003, 2009, and 2011. And the election day polling place for these precincts shall be at the Bastrop ISD Service Center. Early voting will be held beginning April 22nd, ending on April 30th with two 12-hour voting days. Those days will be on April 29th and April 30th. And the Bastrop County has acquired a new voting system this year. In your backup, you'll see the, um, letter from the Secretary of State where the election administrator submitted their proposed application. And also the, um, certification by the Secretary of State of the system, which was conducted in 2017. And that concludes my presentation for 9C.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
A motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Ennis, did you have discussion?
Sir, are we going to, um, be using machines instead of the paper ballots?
No, sir, we're using both. We're using paper, um, and I'm not quite sure exactly how it's working. I need to have a visit with Bridgette, but they're still using paper ballots.
That's all I was going for. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We're, it, in the same vein, we're now moving on to item 9D. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-06 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a joint agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop Independent School District for the May 4, 2019 general election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Mayor and Council, this resolution, as you stated, is to approve a joint agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop Independent School District for the May 4 general election. We have the authority to enter into a joint agreement with this. This authority is given to us, uh, by Chapter 271 of the Election Code. And, uh, that concludes my presentation.
It's cheaper to do it with someone than to do it by ourselves. That's my comment. Move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. We're now on 9E, consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-07 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a contract for the election services between the election administrator of Bastrop County and the City of Bastrop for the May 4, 2019 general election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Mayor and Council, this, uh, resolution will give approval for the City of Bastrop to enter into a contract with the elections administrator of, uh, Bastrop County for the May 4, 2019 general election. This authority is given to us by Section 31.092 of the Election Code. The cost of a joint election, uh, with the City of Bastrop and Bastrop ISD would be $6,579.55. If, uh, Bastrop County is lucky enough to counsel their election and we have to go this election alone, the cost to the City of Bastrop would be $10,305.22. This concludes my-
Madam Secretary, you said Bastrop County, but I believe it's B-I-S-D.
It's B-I-S-D, yes, ma'am. Thank you for that.
Okay, and, um, for clarification, it's my understanding from looking at the previous calendar, should we find ourselves needing to have a runoff election, those dates have already been established and you'll bring that contract at that time. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We will.
All right, so this is just for the May 4 and that's why we're doing that first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The, um, if we are in a runoff, that would be, um, called, um-
Afterwards, at the time, and then we'll bring the contract forward. But we already know what those dates are going to be, should we need them?
Yes, ma'am, we already have the calendar established and the dates are there.
Okay.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. We're on now on 9F. We're going to ask some people for some money. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant from the 2019 State Homeland Security Program grant for a regional command post vehicle at a total cost of $400,000 with no matching funds, no matching funds, from the City of Bastrop, authorizing the Director of Public Safety as the grantee's authorized official, providing for a severability clause, and establishing an effective date. Chief Altgelt?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. As the mayor read, uh, currently Bastrop County does not have a mobile command post that is stationed permanently in the county. So in the event that we have an emergency and we need to get one, we are waiting for one to come possibly from Travis County or from Hayes County. And that time delay isn't very favorable, uh, in some conditions. And the worst-case scenario, if it's something like Hurricane Harvey where the entire state's stricken, there may not be one available. Having a mobile command post will, I was, uh, a lot of things to take care of, uh, some situations as far as communications, strategic planning, handling, uh, uh, media briefings and things like that. It gives us a good working environment where we can actually work closer to the incident than miles and miles away. The agreement that we have is that, uh, if the grant was awarded, we would, uh, store the vehicle and maintain it. And, uh, and then if any incident took place within Bastrop County, we would respond and let them use the vehicle. I have spoken to the sheriff, the chiefs of police in Elgin and Smithville, Brad Ellis, the emergency management coordinator for the county. All of them have vowed to give letters of support and, uh, of this grant and on behalf of the city to, uh, to go forward with it.
Chief Altgelt, great job. Any que-
How long do you think it'll take before we find out what, when they're honoring a grant? Or when they warrant?
Normally, it'll be scored through CAPCOG and normally we know something around the summer, if it's gone through or not.
You don't have a picture of this monster, do you?
Well, there's several of them, um, but it's, it'll be custom-built with the graphics and everything, but I can definitely email one that's similar.
I'm just-
It, it looks like a motor home. It's an RV. And if you go in it, what you see is a lot of radio equipment because what's key in a situation like this is unified command for communications so they can dispatch. Um, typically where you would see the bedroom in a motor home, it's actually office space so that if they need to have breakout space, um, there's an opportunity with the conference room in the back. So when you're out in the field and you've got some type of emergency that's requiring multiple disciplines, like you've got a fire situation and a police situation, it gives them a, um, confidential place, protected from the elements so that there can be, um, strategy. Um, there are sometimes cameras, uh, attached to the external so that the folks in incident command can monitor the scene, um, consider it kind of a battle strategy, if you will, so that they can, um, be able to, uh, maintain a, um, situational presence and command the strategy. I mean, it, command the scene from a strategic standpoint, which, um, when you're dealing with a crime scene or some kind of emergency, time matters. Um, and so just think of it as an RV with Bastrop Police Department's stripes on the side of it.
Great. I, I couldn't envision a vehicle where you would be able to do, uh, uh, interviews with victims or, or, you know, that said that in your information. I thought, you know, what kind of vehicle is that going to be? Great.
It, it also comes with a restroom. And when you're, these guys out in the middle of nowhere, um, some of those kinds of things are important. And so, uh, there's a lot of reasons we would want to provide this.
I move to approve.
But, Councilmember Jones, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Um, one is, is it something that you're going to share with the county? And the other, so it's not just for like what you would think emergencies, weather, whatever, it's for accidents or-
If they deem it-
I mean, it's something you would use. It sounds like maybe, um, for more than what you think is an emergency, I guess.
Yes, ma'am. Emergency can be defined in many different ways, but if there's like a compact, a complex accident scene that requires the, the, the command post and the Elgin Police Department needs it or the Sheriff's Office needs it, or any entity in Bastrop County needs it, we'll bring the vehicle to them, they can utilize it, and we'll bring it back. That's just part of being a good partner and taking care of it. It's a resource that, that nobody in Bastrop County has that is stored here permanently, uh, by any means. And the only resources that I'm aware of that, that do have mobile command posts are state entities and, and, uh, of course, the LCRA and, and, and other entities like that. But as far as the traditional county or municipalities within Bastrop County, um, there is not such a resource.
So, I mean, that being said, wouldn't there be typically, is there a fee for putting that out? Like, just to cover the cost of gas and wear and tear? Is there typically a fee that you would have?
Um, the, the responsibility for us will be the actual maintenance of the vehicle. But typically, if the city has, um, the emergency, they would pay for the gas. If, if there was some kind of damage that occurred to the vehicle and it was their scene, they would take care of it. Um, so it's, um, something that we'll routinely maintain just from your typical preventative maintenance. But if a community needs it for an extended period of time, they would pay for the cost of that vehicle while they utilized it, fill it up with gas, wash it, and bring it back.
Any other questions, Council?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Chief, are we already, are we already aware of the scoring criteria? Sorry, are we already aware of what the scoring criteria is on this grant application? Competitive?
I don't know how we'll score against what the other submittals are because-
No, are we aware of the criteria that CAPCOG is going to put out for, to, to, to score the applicants for the funding? Because I imagine it's a competitive grant?
It is very competitive, yes. But my understanding, and when Daniel Sargent Manis went to the, to the pre-meetings and everything, it was requirement, he feels that this project has a better-than-average chance to be successful.
Devil's Movement, next question.
There, there would be two things that I think would work in our favor. Um, regional always scores and the fact that all of the cities in the county is participating. But I would be willing to bet that no other community that is going to submit a grant had a 2011 fire, a 2015 fire, four FEMA-declared floods, and Hurricane Harvey. fire, a 2015 fire, four FEMA-declared floods and Hurricane Harvey. So if there's ever a justification for a need for an incident command vehicle, if we don't fulfill it, I would argue you don't need them.
Any other questions, Council? It's second, Bill's motion. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis, a second from Councilmember Rogers. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, good luck with the scoring.
Thank you.
We are, it's kinda one of those unfortunate that we may score as well as we do, but glad to have it. We're on to 9G, consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-12 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant from the 2019 CAPCOG Department of Justice grant for a crime scene vehicle at a cost of $62,139.48 with no matching funds from the City of Bastrop authorizing the Director of Public Safety as the grantee authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief?
Yes, so this is a different grant, it's through the Department of Justice monitored by CAPCOG and this is gonna be for a Conal line van that's maxed out and large. Right now, we have all our crime scene materials that are stored in the CID office and then depending on what the incident is, we try to prepare and bring what we can, but sometimes it may be more than what you initially think it is and then going back and forth and things, we find that would be much easier and much more suitable, professional, timely to have all our crime scene equipment in one location that's mobile and the on-call detective can go. You know, unlike television, when the rain comes in and you're washing away blood and other valuable trace evidence, you only have one shot to collect it and we would hate to not have all the materials disposable, immediately disposable to be able to collect perishable evidence. So with it being there, we decided that this is a resource that we could utilize.
Thank you, Chief, Council, any questions? Councilmember Ennis, do you have a question?
Yes ma'am, for us and for the folks at home, can you just kinda delineate the difference between the vehicle we just approved applying for and this vehicle?
So the vehicle you just approved applying for, like City Manager Umler said, is an RV, it is a communications platform with radios that will work for interoperability, whether it's with state agencies or agencies that come to our area, also with satellite telephones, so it's more of a mobile command post. The video, or the vehicle that we're talking about right now is a vehicle that's gonna store our crime scene unit, we're not gonna have a communications platform in there, there is gonna be materials that are needed for casting tire tracks, for looking for blood, trace evidence, alternate light sources and putting all our things, and all our crime scene processing materials in one mobile location so that they can be deployed.
So the bottom-line difference is that one is an emergency command center vehicle, the other one is just a crime scene vehicle?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I just moved to approve resolution number R 2019-12.
I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Jones, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
I hope you get both of them. We're now on the last item on the individual consideration, 9H, consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-13 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas supporting the City of Bastrop submission of an ED 900P Proposal for Economic Development Administration Assistance Grant requesting funding to complete Agnes Street from the edge of Seton Hospital to its eastern connection point just west of Hassler Boulevard, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, this is a really wonderful opportunity for our community. The Economic Development Administration allocated $90 million in fiscal year 2018 as supplemental appropriations for disaster recovery grants to support recovery activities in areas receiving a major disaster designation due to Hurricane Harvey or the other designated disasters in 2017. Qualifying projects include a wide range of construction and non-construction activities and really at the end of the day, the end game is to help diversify the economies of the affected communities. There is a requirement for a 20% match. Staff, including economic development personnel, met with Rachel Steele who works with CAPCOG and CAPCOG is charged as the regional agency to help the Economic Development Administration to administer this grant and at the conclusion of understanding what projects are likely to score well, we came up with the completion of Agnes Drive. So we are submitting a grant request for $1.5 million. As you know, Agnes is currently being constructed from State Highway 304 to the edge of the Seton Hospital construction as a part of the Economic Development Corporation's commitment for Seton to locate here in Bastrop. The portion between Seton Hospital and where Agnes ends just west of Hassler, or Childers I believe, no, it's Hassler, is unfunded, it has been designed if you will, just not funded. So Mike Kramerlander has met with the property owners that would benefit from the completion of this property from an economic development standpoint. They have pledged to donate the right-of-way necessary for construction. Judge Poppy has written a letter of support. The awesome thing about this particular project is it's multifaceted. One of the criteria is we have to have a special need. The special need for us is the fact that State Highway 71 is our primary route in and out of this community, as we all know it is an east-west route, but it's also the evacuation corridor for cities on the coast. So it is possible for gridlock to happen and that would impact our ability to evacuate, it would also have a detrimental effect on our retail sales tax if it were to be shut down for a period of time. So by constructing Agnes, noted in our comprehensive plan as well as our thoroughfare master plan, was to have secondary access north and south of 71. This would complete Agnes on the south side, it would open several significant tracks for economic development. So for a lot of reasons, we think that this project will score very, very well. The way this program is working, they have asked that proposals be submitted, they will be reviewed very quickly. I am told that within about 45 days, we will know whether or not it is funded and their goal is for the money to be distributed sometime at the end of May, early June. So if we are fortunate enough to have this project awarded, it would be a significant game-changer for us, not only from a transportation standpoint, but from an economic development standpoint. BEDC has agreed to fund the 20% match, which is approximately $300,000. Again, the property owners are gonna donate the right-of-way, so the city's responsibility would be to actually own and maintain the infrastructure when completed. So this falls under the category of no-brainer and staff would strongly encourage you to approve this resolution.
Council, any questions for City Manager?
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
I'm giving the tie to Councilmember Jones, 'cause she's a girl. Motion by Councilmember Jones and second by Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, we hope for a good outcome on that. We're now on item number 10, executive session 10A. City Council shall convene and disclose executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with City Attorney regarding status of building Bastrop codes. It is 8:14 and we are in executive session. It is 11:23. It's 11:23 and we are back from executive session. There, on item number 11, we will not be taking any action as a result of executive session, so I am on item 12, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. It is 11, still 11:23 and we are adjourned.